Okay, I'm going to call this to order. This is the Granbury City Council's special meeting. It is 6:00 PM Tuesday, March 28, 2023. We are at Granbury City Hall 116, West Bridge Street in Granbury, Texas. We are now called to order. Mr. Lowery, if you would give the invocation, please.
Just to be here tonight for your grace and mercy that has poured upon us in this time, we pray, Lord Jesus, great creator, you are Lord and you are our Savior. We pray for your wisdom and courage, Lord, poured into us. We pray, Heavenly Father, that we look through the eyes that you have made for us and designed for us so that we can see things, Lord, with clarity and with understanding, Heavenly Father. We pray you're the concrete kingdom that will return, Heavenly Father. We know that someday we will lay before you in judgment. So may as we go forward, we take the blessings you pour upon us, we take the wisdom that you poured within into us. We pray, Heavenly Father, that we use those skills and those talents that you blessed upon us and use them with good judgment and good discernment, Heavenly Father, so that it's better for this community, so they can see the light of your son, Jesus, as we go forward in our days. And send your son, our Lord and Savior, we pray. Amen.
Amen. If you're drawn in for the pledge allegiance to the American and to the Texas flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. We're going to move into an executive session, handle just a couple of matters. Be back in a minute. We wanted to open it up this way so that the public comments and the agenda items, the deliberation agenda items, there's not going to be anything pressing. We can go as long or as short as we need to cover these things. So with that, I now declare that the Granbury City Council has convened an open session, that all members are present. The city council will go into closed session pursuant to provisions of Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following sections, and that is Section 551071, consultation with attorney pending or contemplated litigation. We'll be right back. Thank you. Okay. We're back. We are now going to reconvene. I now declare that the Granbury City Council reconvenes into open session. There was no action taken in closed session and all council members are present. So now we will continue with our agenda. Public comments on agenda items. Carla, do you have anybody that signed up? Is there anyone that'd like to speak? Okay. I hear no one would like to speak. We'll go back to number seven, the deliberation agenda. Discuss and consider adopting Resolution Number 23-07, establishing the City of Granbury City Council priorities of the 88th Legislative Session. Before we get going on that, one of the things that I wrote down earlier this afternoon was that, an opinion, is that we need broad statements of purpose versus specific actions to achieve clearly defined goals. And you know, I'm always looking for clearly defined actions and goals, but at this point, I think we need to really consider broad statements of purchase, of purpose versus settling on, oh, we must, you know, stop X, and we must stop Y, or we've got to get out there and support this. But from a broad concept basis of what's best for the city, let's see if we can, see if we can work in that area. If so, our council wants to do something different along those lines, I'm for that as well. Mr. Cobbman, could you provide input, insight?
Sure. In your packet, I included the North Texas Commission advocacy roadmap for this legislative session. I also added a TML legislative update. The Regional Chamber Coalition priorities was attached with five simple points. And I think that's what the mayor's alluding to, is come up with, with a philosophy that overreaches many bills, both for and against, based on the philosophy adopted. So I put together a draft in your packet. Basically, I plagiarized the Texas Municipal League.
Research?
Research, Texas Municipal League, and edited to make it fit our city. And there's bullet points, and then there's numbers with subtopics under it, all part of this resolution. And there's some, I guess, four pages of legislative priorities here. But they're basically not addressing a particular bill yea or nay, it's more of a priority, and then support or oppose. It does list a few bills that are, that we want to make maybe some, some positive impacts to, that it's already in the works, that we want to support. But for the most part, it's a very generic document, and obviously, it was drafted before most of the legislation was filed. But again, it gives you a kind of a roadmap, a legislative roadmap, to be able to wrap your head around this, and also that we could be able to send this resolution to our elected officials and let them know what your perspective is, so that it's a communication tool that lets them know. And then if they have a question, maybe they can call and follow up with you or the mayor, and you can give them a good clarity of action. They want to do what's best for the citizens of Granbury, just like you do. And if there's something in a bill that you're saying, this is, this bill creates this, as you're voting, if you see a bill that is in opposition to what we're talking about, let's talk, you know? Let's, let's figure out how, how we could come to reconcile our differences in, in the way you're going to vote or not vote. So I think it's a good tool just to have a discussion, so. And I know that there's opportunities to go to Austin and testify before committees, and that's an important part of the process for elected officials. We've done some of that in the past, and sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. But I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. I brought, let me just say, I brought a highlighter and an ink pen, and I am prepared to make edits to this document that I submitted to you. And hopefully Carla can re-top those tomorrow, or delete whatever you want, and make this be worded the way you want, and we can get it executed tonight with the proposed changes, if you so want or desire. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Reynolds?
Burt Wells.
Not bad, Ed.
It's okay. First of all, I want to tell the council thank you. I appreciate your willingness to come again on another night to do this. This was just so comprehensive, the list of bills that we looked at, nearly 300, which I mentioned last time we were here. And I went through the draft of the legislative priorities. There are some in here that are probably a little bit specific. I don't know how we want to address that, if we want to go through each bullet point real quickly and, and look at that, or just cross them off. The, the resolution, I think, just in and of itself is fine. There are, there are some sort of housekeeping things. We mentioned, you know, we want to maybe go to Austin. We're kind of on a, a quick turnaround time. We know that a couple of them are already coming up or sitting in committee, probably going to pass tomorrow, you know? We don't, we don't know for sure. They could. So I guess, before we even get started on this, my question is, how can we, as a council, appropriately send emails or go to Austin in a timely manner? Who do we want to do that? Do we want to appoint somebody to do that, or several somebodies to do that? And how do we designate talking points as far as that goes? I mean, I know that there are probably some things that all of us agree on, but not necessarily every one of these things. We might not agree on everything. So I guess my point is, as a council, we have to be careful in, in looking through this and coming up with a priority list that is specific. Mayor, to your point, you know, maybe make it a little more broad in some areas, or shorter. But the other thing that I wanted to do is figure out how to handle how we address this in a timely manner without having to get together every time, and is there an avenue to do that? Do we come up with talking points that, that, you know, bills that we, we have concern with and send them to you, Chris, and then you send them out, and have our public information officer come up with talking points, and we go from there? What does that look like legally?
I would suggest that if there's a bullet point on these pages that y'all don't agree on, let's delete it upfront. That way, there's no argument later about, I don't agree with that one, I adopted the resolution, but these numbers, say like, modernize the Texas Universal Fund through revenue sources that ensure long-term sustainability for the provision of broadband services. If you don't even know what that is, maybe we need to strike that. You see what I'm saying? But if, but if y'all do know what it is, and you believe in it, then we should leave it there. So I would say, if you, I think you've all probably read this draft already, and if there's some things that are, definitely need to be eliminated, let's deal with that first. The process of, once you adopt this policy, I think it's a commitment from the council to stick to the policy. This is our, this is our voted on approved policy, and I'm, I'm responsible, if I feel so led, to communicate that with legislators. You don't, you don't have to, you don't have to have permission to, to, to do it because the council is authorizing. This is our priority, as long as you're speaking like this, we're all one voice. And the worst thing that could happen is if you, two of you go down and talk to the same legislature and have a different perspective. And so that's the purpose of this, is to unify this priority. And, you know, if something's not listed on here that you have a strong feeling for, there's nothing that would keep you from speaking as an individual, but not as a council member. And, and you would make that distinction very clear to them. We didn't address that as a council, but this is how I feel, you know? And, and there's nothing wrong with that. And, and listen, it's important that the, the people in Austin have the participation from the elected officials in their district. It's very important. And they may feel, they may feel welcomed with it, or they may not feel welcomed with it. It just depends. But just like our citizens come to us with concerns, we want to listen to them. I think that's the way, I think that's the way our elected officials are. They want to hear from us. They're very busy. This would be a good concise way of communicating with their staff, the position of the city. But again, it, it needs to be accurate. So if there's something that you want to change or delete, that's what we're here for, I hope. And, and then the, who goes, who's the messenger? It's anybody that's available, I think. And, and obviously, it's a, it's a legitimate expense of taking care of the city business, so I see no, no budgetary restraints at this point.
So these, this priority list, what you're speaking of here?
Yes.
Yeah.
This, this document, this, this document is part of the resolution.
Right.
Okay? So it's, it's, it's referenced in this being attached.
Okay. And the, you know, I like the way that you put this, our highest priority is oppose bad bills.
Yeah.
The council's determined that the council's highest priority goes the defeat of legislation deemed detrimental to the city of Granbury. And as a practical matter, adoption of this position means that the beneficial bills would be sacrificed as necessary in order to kill detrimental bills. And does anybody have a comment in, in, you know, support of saying, hey, let's keep that? Or does anybody want to mark that out? Mr. Rodriguez?
Mayor, that may be open to interpretation, just for a simple fact that what we may think is bad bill, they may think it's a good bill for us.
Well, that's the whole point.
Yeah, I know. But like I said, it may be open to interpretation of the reader.
Right.
Well, here, the priorities are very clear, erudability, the ability of a city to issue debt. That's, that's a priority policy, and that would, if there's a bill that they're proposing that would be against that, and I'm not saying there is or isn't, I'm just saying, for example, if there's a bill that says that, that's a priority policy, that would be a priority to kill that instead of spending your political capital on trying to get something to pass that you're happy with that probably passed anyway. That's what that paragraph is about. It's, it's a value. We want to make sure that we do no harm to cities before anything good is passed for cities. That's what that paragraph means.
And, you know, at the risk of getting deep in the weeds, but House Bill 2127, you know, I encourage you all to go and read it because we would literally have nothing to do if House Bill 2127 passes. I mean, can't set salaries, can't set budgets, you can't, you know, we talk about issues with ordinances. State takes that over. So that's, I think that, that, you know, I look at that and my opinion, that's a bad bill. And I think when each of you look at it, you'll find something right down here in our priority policies that we would like to be supporting is going to be, is going to be attacked in that bill. And yes, Eddie, there are 8,000 bills out there, so there's going to be interpretation on, on a heck of a lot of them. And that's the frustration, is that there are 8,000 bills out there. We can't take a list, and maybe we have some, a few, but we can't take a list and say, we're four, seven, eight, and 12. We're not four, 2,400, and, and 600. So in, in broad way, in a broad base here. And, you know, this doesn't have to be our last conversation either. As we come around and, and you start getting further into this, as the, as you go to Austin and you start talking to, to your peers from other cities, and you go to the senators and the, and the representatives, and they provide input, and their staff provides input, you know, you come back, you learn something, and you, and you share that knowledge.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Vale.
I had an opportunity to kind of read through everything. I did tell you.
All 8,000.
No, I, I did tell the mayor that anything from 699 to 8,000, I was his guy, so you could ask me any specifics around those particular bills. I think this is a good starting point for council, and I, I think Chris and, and the staff are putting this together. I think it does obviously mirror what, what TML is, is doing. I think they're a great representative of, of the small cities. Obviously, you know, we, we spend a lot of time at TML conferences, we got one coming up in May, to better understand, you know, what's going on in our legislation down in Austin, and also what, what they can and what they do do relative to representing the city. My understanding, this is the first time the council has taken on this, this task of going through and identifying things that are important to the city. And I do recall, obviously, I wasn't on council, but I was on planning zoning, when a number of things were coming from the state that were mandates, some were unfunded mandates that required the city to go back and redline a number of ordinances and change how we did, how we do the business in our city. And, you know, some of those things were not in the best interest of, of the city of Granbury. And I, I told the city manager the other day that it felt like, you know, sometimes they, you know, we're trying to fix or address something in a particular city, it gets passed on the floor, and then that gets applicable to every other city and county across the state of Texas. And obviously, this is a, you know, one size does not fit all situation, so. And I, I took the opportunity earlier this week, too, to sit with Chris and really review the document so that I could clearly answer the question he asked a minute ago, which is if there's something in there that you don't understand, let's either discuss it or strike through it. So I wanted to make sure, and I've highlighted a bunch of things in here to make sure that I understood what it is that we were putting forward to either support or oppose, so that Trish's, or Trish's question, that, you know, when we are down in Austin, or we're talking to people and representing the city and the council, that we can talk, you know, somewhat intelligently about what we put on paper. So I don't think, you know, for the, for the most part in here, that I have an issue with, with anything that's in here. There were a few small things in my mind, you know, if you went to the introduction, the second, the last bullet point, you know, that says member cities, that really ought to be sister cities. And again, I thought the opposing bad bills is really just an overarching statement. And then everything underneath that in terms of our priority policy and the things that we support are really supporting things with that statement, which, these are things that are important to the city that we believe are, you know, again, important, that would not be detrimental to the city of Granbury. Point D on that second page is really is ETJ, not ETF, that's really just a typo. But again, I, I, I kind of found everything in there, you know, had applicability, you know, for us. Some of them are, are obviously a little challenging with regard to trains, but we all deal with trains, and I think that just lets, lets people know that, you know, we care about, we care about people traveling up and down 377, and, you know, as Chris said the other day, you know, if they wanted to, they could park that train on that train track all day long, and we couldn't do anything about it. And again, some of these things like Point 12 about rock crushing, I don't think we have an incident here with that, but again, that was a TML statement. But again, that's just something that could be out there. You know, we're going to have some batch plants up and down, perhaps 377, that we need to be cognizant of because they create a lot of noise when this project gets underway. You know, I think certainly 21 supporting the state electric grid is important. We've all been through the last couple, two, three winters on that. And again, I, I think the other one is just the things that we're opposed to. And again, I, again, I asked Chris some questions the other day, just to make sure I understood, you know, what all those were. And again, some of those have specific applicability to the city, and some, you know, perhaps could, or, or maybe will, so. That was kind of my take going through this. I, I think, just one last thing, I think the other challenge for this, and Trish just mentioned it, when you look at a document like this, for me, I want to try to get into specifics. So tying back these, these kind of statements, and which bills do they tie to? And I don't know if that's even a task that you could tackle or not, but, huh?
That's probably too broad.
Yeah. But that is something that, I mean, I'd be interested in. And, you know, 2127 is pretty easy to get to, but there's a lot of other ones in here that are going to have applicability to this, to this document, and that might be an exercise just to say, hey, these are the top five bills that we're going to be watching, that we want to try to have some influence on. So that was my take on the exercise for this evening.
Yep.
I would add that, based on what you come up with as far as the policy, that I could reach out and find positions from different organizations that we are members of. Texas Public Power Association has a legislative watch, and they provide me information. But if I knew what you were looking for, I would be able to help you identify those bills.
Okay.
And put out, you know, information to you on a regular basis. So let's take that on as a responsibility of what I do. But I, I need kind of a matrix to, to understand what you're after. I don't want to be the one setting your policies. I want to make that really clear.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Coming from a communicative background, I know that our legislators are probably really not going to read all of these points anyway. And in my mind, I guess what I'm looking maybe to do is consolidate some of these, because as I looked over this whole list of priorities, there's really overlying themes here, like electric grid, train, train and traffic, ETJ, police, fire, air quality, safety, and, and just regular traffic. And to get to our legislators in a short and succinct manner, it might behoove us just to shorten this a little bit and come up with a much broader base, based on those that we see in, you know, repetitive in this document. And, and I, I promise you that they're not going to read the whole section on rock crushing because they probably have already heard it, you know? We see that as a, you know, coming against our air quality. That's something that we maybe, maybe wouldn't want in our city, but maybe we just need to say that. So I guess where, where I'm going with this is, I love this document, but I don't think that they're going to read it, simply because it's really long. And I, I just wrote something out here, maybe just to add to the front of the resolution, and I love the bad bills, we're opposing bad bills, but something to the effect of, we oppose bills that would undermine the quality of life, undermine the authority that, that we have to offer the quality of life that our citizens deserve and want, something of that nature. Anything that would go against what our citizens expect of us as ordinance creators. And that still could be very broad, but do you see where I'm going with this? I want, I want them to actually pay attention to what we're sending them. And I think that, while I love this document, and I read the whole thing, I think that getting it to them, it would be better served if we just shortened it a little bit and be a little bit more broad about, you know, those different aspects that I was just talking about.
And I think that that's what the Regional Chamber Commerce people did. They came up with five points, and that's pretty simple.
But I'm being more specific to our.
Yeah, you might want to refer back to that document, the RCC Top Priorities, and, and look at that and, and direct me how to format something like that. Something that simple, is that what you're thinking?
Well, yes, and, and I like this. Sorry. There might just be a couple more things that we could add in there.
Yeah, we've got lots of room there.
Yeah.
Because we're not going to have all those sponsors at the bottom.
Right. But no, yes, and I do like this document as well. I just want to add to it and maybe reduce what we've got on our plate right here.
Trish, a great point. I know in the military, you use the front page to get your point across. It's what we call the bluff, the bottom line up front. And that's where you put your main point that you're trying to, to get across to your audience, and that's one or two paragraphs, and that's it. And then everything else that's, that's attached to your document is just narrative of what your bluff is. So I think that's what, that's a great idea, just to use the front cover sheet just to grab their attention real quick and say, this is, this is what Granbury's about. And then we can make the document as long as we want, but use the front page as our main point.
The, I, I like this, too. Trish, what, am I hearing that you would like to add a, you know, we have support, we have five support, or six, you know, five support items there. Do you have others that you would support or sentences, or would there be one that you would say we oppose, X, Y, or Z? Now, the advocacy roadmap, if I look at the verbiage that they have in front of, in front of that, where they did have something on opposition, but I don't see that. Yeah, I mean, you're right, it's over, it's overwhelming. If you, and the, you know, I have been down there five or six times already on Text 21, and, you know, the first time, they, they were still moving in, so it wasn't all that good. And the first time, they were still moving in, so it wasn't all that good. The next time, they were very interested, they sat and talked with us. Chris and I were there together, and there were some very good conversations. I was down there last week with the NTX people, and they are literally welcoming, because they have become, I think, inundated with social media, which they've looked at now and said, Jesus, is this coming from a person or a chatbot? You don't know. And they want to talk to people. So I think it's important that we have, when we're down there, we're going to be talking as the city of Granbury, so it needs to be a consistent, a consistent form and format And this, you know, I think these do, you know, pretty well encapsulate our values as a city here. And if you support these, then you're in opposition to anything that's not supportive of this. Maybe we don't even need to use the opposition piece here.
I think if we were to do, the one that we're looking at here, the North Texas Regional Chamber Coalition, it's focused on schools, of course, and healthcare, which of course I love. And the one line in here, legislation that maintains local decision-making authority, that's very broad, yes, which works, but I want to make sure that we include police, fire, you know, air quality, maybe just add a few of those key points in that one sentence? Because electricity or sustainability of the infrastructure development is in the next one with regard to the electric grid. But just to maybe just point out some of the things that, you know, we've got several points on this document, Chris, that you gave us that are, there's more than one, like electricity, things like that, and police. Maybe just adding to that one point, legislation that maintains local decision-making authority, maybe broadening that just a little bit to include some of those things that I was just talking about, air quality, police, fire, ETJ, you know. It's just an opinion.
Well, that's why we're here, that's why it's a special meeting.
Mayor?
Yes. Mr. Vale.
Could, I mean, could you not take the introduction, I mean, the first page of this document, which really everything, it said, "The city of Granbury, or City Council approach to 2023 session is guided by the principles that spring from a deeply rooted conservative legislation policy." Could you not take those? And is that not this kind of summation page? Let's just go right here, yeah. I mean, I appreciate Trish's point. I mean, if you, this is one of these things, I mean, you know, in my old world, you have a big document, everybody flips to the last page, that was the money page. But if you had a summation page, what Trish is referring to, and Eddie echoed that, maybe that is the introduction page, because it really is kind of our guiding principles of the things that are important to the city, which is, you know, at the end of the day, we want to, we think we're in the best, in the best position to understand the issues and opportunities that are in our city, and for the council and the citizens to come up with the resolutions and the solutions to solve those issues and problems. And anything that would oppose that, or bills that erode the city's ability to do that, you know, we're in opposition of. We want to, we want to be able to, you know, maintain our ability to, you know, steer our own ship, as it were.
I like that. I'd take, I'd just take introduction off of page one and stop there and say, hey, because you could probably encapsulate everything that we have beyond this into one of these bullet points that are here. Yes, sir. Mr. Wiley.
If you use those bullet points, then those, the questions, the last four or five that are questions should probably be changed to statements.
Correct.
Right.
And just reword them as a statement.
Right. Good one. Thank you, Mr. Wiley.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So as I was going through this over the last couple of days, and then, you know, we're just rereading through it now, if we wanted to get, I don't want to say in the weeds, because I don't know if that's the right word, but if we wanted to get a little more specific, like I like the way that this is laid out, we could probably eliminate some of the support, not because they're necessarily duplicates, but they're, some of them are kind of overarching in the same general area. But if we're wanting something that is reduced, I would tend to agree with the comments that were made previously, take the first page, do some rewording of statements, and I would almost include our highest priority in that section. But otherwise, I didn't necessarily have an issue with the document as it's laid out, if we wanted it to be a little more in-depth than just a single page.
Well, kind of like what Eddie was saying, if the first page, we reworded that a little bit, and that's the hook, or the, what'd you call it?
Bluff.
Bluff. And then, and then you could have the whole thing in there, and if the first page is interesting enough, they very likely would read it, or at least get through a couple pages before they go, okay, that's enough. But I mean, there's, there's a lot of good stuff in here. I really enjoyed the rock crushing part especially.
What I-
And snit crushing.
What I've seen with the, the Arts Commission was down, was down there, and I was with the Arts Commission, the NTXX and with Text 21, is there is a one-page handout. Now, the package that you have has 10 pages in it, but the, there is a one-page handout that is handed, you know, to the representatives, to the, to the individuals, the staff that's there.
I would propose this, this is a matter of maybe speeding things along tonight for you. Why don't, why don't we make this the page with the highest priority opposed bad bills, and reword the statement, and then have the resolution, and that's it. And then, the rest of this, we can use as support material for, to help bring you along, and also help me put the bills together that you need to be looking at, that's obviously going to have our attention based on this matrix of these three pages. Does that sound like something you would want to do?
I think, I think that sounds great. There's one comment that you made in here, Chris, and I love this comment, and I reworded it here a little bit, but the best government is that which is closest to the people. And anybody who knows me knows that I don't like blanket policies. I don't want Granbury to look like Dallas, or Dallas to look like Granbury. We all have something unique about us, and that's why citizens relocate to individuals, you know, their ideal areas, because every city has a different charm. And typically, we know what the pulse is of the people that we see at the store every day, or at church, or at every fundraiser that we attend. And they are comfortable coming here and telling us than, when they don't agree with us, which is, that's their right to do, but that does not get to the legislators in, at the state level. And my concern, and you mentioned, Mayor, 2127, that is one particular bill that is causing me heartburn, because it basically wants to take back overarching authority to the state who purports to be for local government. And that is worrisome, because that's that blanket policy that we're talking about, that does not allow us to do what our citizens want us to do. I just, I would have a hard time understanding how 181 legislators could govern a population of 29 million.
Well, Mayor Wes Mays-Coppell, I was with last week, summarized it the best, I think. He says, "We, as the mayor and the city council, meet twice a week to make these decisions that we're talking about in the House Bill 2127. And you think you can do that by meeting at once every two years? Because that's what it is." It's like, you know.
So, Chris, I like the idea, what you just proposed, that one page with the resolution.
Shouldn't have got me going.
I will get with you after the meeting to fine-tune that statement about the government closest to the people, to include that in this change. Thank you.
I would just echo that, Chris. I think that's a, I think that's a good plan. It's a good summation. And one of the things the mayor just said, you know, and I was sitting here thinking, how much time you have with a legislator in Austin? I mean, how, that's a short interaction. So, you want to be able to hand something to them, go, these are the five things, run them down the road, and I've got more material behind it, but I wanted to let you know what was important to the city of Granbury, Texas, which is in your district, that you're representing us here. So, I agree.
And to make it further, we could come up with a, you know, I'm just going to say a flashier presentation page, instead of black and white like this.
Eye-catching, yeah.
You know, we could, we could do, not this week, but sometime in the next 10 days, come up with something that, that looks pretty, that's easy to hand and easy to read, larger font, whatever.
Right.
And try to gain some attraction out of it.
I have another quick, and this is the, our IT department's department, but, you know, we could even go so far as putting a QR code, that seems to be the big thing. We could list this information on the website and just link it to that QR code, if any legislator does want to look at it in depth.
Well, we could do that on the next page.
On the, correct.
Or the backside of it.
Or even right on the front page of that one pager, that's really where you want it.
We have one of the, probably the finest advertising group around, it's Tammy and with our communications group here. Yeah. Utilize that skill set.
Well, I think that QR code's a great idea. I mean, we put the city logo on it, make sure they know it's the city of Granbury, and Michael just put a, or shared with me a document we're using on the great Granbury cleanup that's got a QR code on it that takes you to a whole signup page. So, that QR code, and everybody, most everybody I know has got a camera, so, on their phone, and you take a quick picture of that and get all the details. So, I think it's a great plan.
So, do we have a plan? We got a plan here? So, we do not need to get a motion on this, right?
I think you need a motion ultimately to adopt what we've edited it to.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Do we want to do that tonight, or do we want to wait until there's a final draft?
Yeah, you really don't have time. They're meeting in committees starting that affect y'all tomorrow.
Then I will make a motion to draft up the resolution based on the statements made tonight.
Or approve it?
Or approve the resolution based on the statements made tonight.
I will second that.
I hear a motion to approve, based on the statements made tonight. I hear a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. I hear no nays, it is approved, six and O. Thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Does anyone have any other business that would like, needs to be covered tonight? No? Okay, based on that, we are adjourned. Thank you.